Your motion to be called the June 27th, 2022 Sag Harbor School District Board of Education meeting to order.
Some.
Just a second. With any conversation, all in favor?
Okay.
Everybody would stand and join the meeting more than pleasantly just.
I apply allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Republic which stands on this.
Things out of order this evening. We're going to go now to section four of tonight's agenda, which is the President's comments. We have two board members this evening that will be leaving us. This will be their last Board of Education meeting, so we'd like to take some time to recognize them. And then we'll allow for public input should anyone be here to comment on anything that's school made. With that, I'm going to ask Yorgos to come up first. Yorgos, so. Blackface for you. I'll read it so that everybody hears it. It says, "In appreciation for your service to the Sag Harbor Union Free School District, Board of Education as a board member for the term of three years, your contribution has enriched the lives of students and served as an example for all of us on the board."
Thank you very much.
So I wanted to congratulate you and walk in from the board. Everybody on that.
Thank you.
Hi, or if you want to say it into the board, you can do that.
It was a great, it was a great experience. You know, it was really like a lot of work for the last two years and we spent a lot of time all together. And I really enjoyed it and, you know, I'm happy new people are going to come to the board and take over.
You're pretty good.
I just want to say thanks to Yorgos for your service. I really enjoyed working with you and I think, you know, the background experience that you have was a great asset. And I'll miss, I know you won't miss us.
I would want to add that and also say that you did a lot of great work on some of the committees, which are behind the scenes, but made a big difference over the years too. And like the policy committee is not the most glamorous thing. It's hard to get people to actually want to participate on that. And you, you were one of the very active members and helped to, to change our policies and make sure we're on track.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the sacrifices you've made. It's, you know, we're all volunteers here and, you know, people think one, every other Monday night that's such a big deal, but we end up missing a lot of Little League games to come here and other things. So it's just, you know, important to recognize that. And, you know, you and I have not always agreed on everything, but that's what makes this board important is that the breadth of experience. So thanks so much.
Yorgos, it's been a pleasure working on the board. I appreciate your insights my first year, really helped me out with some thoughts and ways to, you know, kind of move forward and help me through, especially with the committees on the planning committee side, you know, showing me how to move forward in those and I appreciate the time and effort.
Sandy, can you hear us?
I can hear you guys. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Hi, guys. Well, Yorgos, I'm obviously here in baseball world, but I want to make sure I came on to thank both you and Chris for your dedication of the last three years. The insight that you brought to the board, the commitment you gave us, we all know this is a challenging job and most of the time it's pretty thankless. So I personally wanted to say thank you to you, Yorgos, for spending three years with us in a very, very difficult situation, especially with COVID and everything else. And thank you to your family for allowing them to, to put up with us. So thank you for your service.
Thanks, Sandy. Thank you, Yorgos. Chris, I'd like to have Chris Teis come up next. So I had Mary do a little looking in and some time for Chris, because Chris has served 12 years on the school board. And what we could find from the public record is that equates somewhere in the range without exact extra meetings to 288 meetings, approximately just under 1,500 hours, if those meetings were right. So I'm sure there was more and that's committees on top of that, but 288 meetings and 15 hours of public service, it's, it's impressive. So I've learned a lot from being on the board with you for a short time, so I appreciate that. We can still reach out to you because the amount of knowledge you have is, is great for all of us and necessary for all of us. So we have some more esteemed speakers this evening, so I'll keep mine short and we'll bring them up in a second. This is, and I'll read the plaque, "To Chris Teis, in appreciation for your dedication and service to the Sag Harbor Union Free School District Board of Education, as a board member for 12 years, board vice president for four years, your contribution has enriched the lives of students and served all of us as an example." Chris has served here since first July 1 of 2010 through June 30 of 2022. So with that, thank you, Chris. We also have. And yes. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And with that, I'd also, wait, you're not going anywhere yet, please say. I'd like to invite up the Honorable Brett Beal, who has some words and other things to say. So if you could join him over at the lectern.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Nichols for inviting me to be here tonight for Chris's last meeting. And, you know, first of all, I know what, and Yorgos also, thank you for your service for three years. You know, I know firsthand what it was like, what being a school board member was like. Many people have heard me say this, but my father was on the school board in Sag Harbor in the late 60s and early 70s, he was on the school board for nine years. So I got to see the, what a school board member does through the eyes of an eighth grader when my, when my father got elected and, you know, it's obvious the amount of time and effort and dedication. And, you know, having had the opportunity to work with you many, many times on many, many issues relating to education. You know, I know how seriously you took this and all the contributions that you made to the children, to the students here at Pearson High School. And it is, it is greatly, greatly appreciated by all of us. As I said, being a school board member may be the hardest job in education, with the possible exception of being an eighth grade teacher. But the, you know, and I know that this has been a, a family commitment, you know, Dad Walter being on the board for all those years also. And we all agree that it gratitude to the entire Teis family. But tonight, Chris, this is your life. So it's my pleasure to present you with, I have a certificate from my colleague, my partner in the state legislature, Tony Palumbo, or state senator, recognizing you on your 12 years of service to the school board. So I'm going to, I get to do double duty tonight. And I also have a proclamation from, from, from the State Assembly, again honoring all your years of service. And, you know, thank you just doesn't say enough. We just appreciate all the great work that you did and just wish you the best and congratulations.
No, I'm going to get out of the way. Yeah.
But I timed it, it's two minutes. It's, it's been in the past, you know, four or five years, a lot of retiring members have stood up here and given the board advice, and I'm not going to do that. But I just had a couple of things of thoughts that I wanted to share. I'm staying here not just as a retiring school board, but as a grateful parents, where three daughters graduated from the school business. In my perspective, great school districts happen when you have an outstanding staff, committed school board, and it's the support from the community. And I think in Sag Harbor, we have all three. The Rother School District, from the administrators to the business office, secretarial staff, guidance counselors, custodial staff, bus drivers, the folks that maintain the grounds, monitors, cafeteria workers. And I'm beginning, I'm so sorry, but the Rother Buildings, there are people who work hard very, every day, very hard, and are dedicated to our children and their success. Jobs, particularly during the past few years, and I respect and thank you for all that you do for our children. To my colleagues here and those I've served with before, unless you've served in this role, I don't think one understands the time, attention and heart it takes to do this job and is a volunteer no less. And I'm going on record to remind people we don't get paid because we get several, because people tell us they pay our salary. You get zero taxes when you pay our salary. Anyway, I respect all you do and I really appreciate the collegial way we've been able to work together. And to the community, thank you for year after year supporting our children by supporting the school district. Recently, we've lived in some of the most challenging times, which sometimes has brought this community together and at other times the surface division. So to the community, I ask that you stay involved and engaged. And please try to look through the lens that everyone here and everyone who works here is simply trying to do the best for Sag Harbor's children. Lastly, I want to thank my family, Steve and my girls, who've always been very supportive, you know, even when I've missed meals and games and celebrations, and I've even had birthdays here. Too many birthdays here, actually. I also want to do, finally, a shout out to my parents, Walter and Chris Teis, who have always impressed upon me the importance of volunteering and being part of the solution. My dad was a public school teacher for almost 40 years and served on the school board for about six, most of which he was president. And my mom, who's, I think literally thousands of hours volunteering in almost every Sag Harbor local organization. You even still do more of that than you probably should. But you, you both have shown me what it means to be a good citizen. So I want to thank you very much for, for working with you all these years and I wish the district the best. Thank you.
Sandy, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Well, I, I'm really saddened that I'm not here tonight because I just wanted to, you know, thank both of them, but Chris especially. We've been friends for well over 20 years. We've served on the board for many of those years. Chris is probably one of the hardest working, detail oriented, amazing board member I've ever worked with. Sometimes she can drive us crazy because she asks so many questions. But the part about Chris that was always most amazing was that she did her work, she did it diligently. She did her caring and every decision that she ever made was, was in the best interest of children. And I want to say we've been through, I think, four superintendents, worldwide pandemic. Our kids graduated in a rainstorm, slid down Pearson hail for their diploma. And I know this isn't the end for you with us, with the board, because we're not letting you go too far. You've got a couple of committees to be on. And I want to just say that I wouldn't have missed this for anything. Sorry, I'm in Virginia. The Hamptons League is winning eight to five in the eighth inning, so that's good. And I just want to say that I love you. And you definitely helped me out along the way and you've taught me so much as a board member and more importantly, as a great friend. So thank you. And to both of you, enjoy your families and dinners and birthdays. I love you guys.
Thanks. Our first of all, I'd say thanks to Assembly, you know, I think two meetings in a row. Appreciate it and everything. Appreciate everything that you do for the school district and the community here on East End. Thank you. And very special thanks to Chris, you know, service and dedication, obviously, is a understatement when it comes to what you've done, not just for the length of service, but the incredible level of preparation. And as Sandy said, work and detail that goes into every meeting. We all have a lot to learn from the service that you've done and really big shoes to fill. So thank you very much.
I want to say thank you first for how much you, all of us. You have, at least with me, when I first started, you really took the time to explain so much. And I'm sure you've done it with every new board member, which has been invaluable. And, but not, you've not only taught us about the information that we needed to know, but you've taught us about how to work as a team in a lot of ways, because we all, we don't always get what we want. And whenever a, you didn't agree with something, you still stood by the board. And that's just been a really important asset of your, your leadership through teamwork. And so I really appreciate that. And not that you're maybe on the outside, I, I know that you're going to continue to be an advocate for the board and that people are going to still come up to you and ask you what you think about things. And I know you're going to have that measured response that you always do, which is that there's multiple sides to things and that, you know, that there's, there might be things that people don't realize is going on behind the scenes. And so, you know, like Sandy said, you're going to continue to work on committees. And we all appreciate everything that you've done to date, but that, you know, we know that you're going to continue to, to do one of those. Thank you.
Chris, I'd say that I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your support, taking the time to explain things as a new board member, some of the processes and things that we discussed. You helped clarify, helped clarify to me and I appreciate that time. And to me, you're like a model board member with your thoroughness and preparedness for each meeting. I think, you know, your departure is going to be a loss to the district. And, you know, I think you've done so much for the district already. And just appreciate your, your time and service and best of luck to you.
Crazy, we started together three years ago, running for the board and we finished together. It was an amazing experience. I really enjoyed working with you and the board, the committees. Again, you helped me very much in the beginning, really understanding, you know, the dynamics of the board and, you know, all the educational part. So I really like, you know, owe you a lot for like helping me step up to the role and really like learning to like, I'll be a good board member.
I would at this time throw this into public input once if anyone was here and like the same thing on behalf of either of the retiring members or we can, we would continue with our meeting on your own.
Happy to report.
Okay. If it's not related to them, just give me one second and I can pull them over to that part. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Yorgos. You can't leave yet, you got to stay this evening. But anybody else that was here, that was here for Chris and Yorgos, you're more than welcome to spend the rest of the evening with us or I'll give you a minute to leave now so we can then continue all the rest of our week.
I think we were still serving until the third.
You are, so you can't leave.
Hopefully things stay conservative with his time.
Okay, guys, I'm going back to baseball.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you. I'll talk to you guys soon. Bye.
Thank you, back. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we're going to go back to public input number one. The Board of Education encourages participation in school-related matters that board needs. Public input is reserved for comments related to agenda and non-agenda items and does not require signing. The public input period is under strict to accommodate as many comments as possible. The board does have discretion to limit public input if the meeting is going particularly long. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must identify a single spokesperson. Comments should be as brief as possible. No speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than three minutes during public input number one. If a member of the public wants to address the board more than once, they will wait until all others have had the opportunity to do so. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil and respectful manner. Obc language, libel statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Board will not permit in public session to discussions regarding an individual district personnel or student. Persons wishing to discuss these matters should present their comments and/or concerns to the appropriate administrator during regular business hours. A member of the community fails to conduct themselves properly or violates the rules set forth herein, the board has the right to suspend that community member's privilege of speaking during public input. Persons making comments at a board meeting will address remarks to the president and may direct questions or comments to board members or other district officials only upon the approval of the president. Board members and the superintendent shall have the privilege of asking and answering questions of any person who addresses the board. President shall be responsible for quarterly conduct of the meetings and shall rule on such matters as to time allowed for public discussion and the appropriateness of the subject matter being presented. President shall have the right to discontinue any public input which violates this policy. With that, if there's anyone here in person or online that wishes to participate in public input number one, that would be the time. Please come up, state your name only, and you'll have three minutes to address the call.
Hello, I'm Karen Schroder and I am the parent of two students in the school, one in the middle school, one in high school. And I just wanted to come and briefly speak about athletics. And while I could have done this in an email, I wanted to come in person to give my sincere thanks to everyone that was involved in making the athletic awards ceremony happen last week. It was a very nice event honoring our JV and varsity athletes. I also think it was a very important event. Our student athletes commit a lot of time to their sports and they've earned that moment to be recognized. So thank you very much for that. Looking ahead, I wanted to just share an opinion on the hiring of a new athletic director. And I know that hiring any position on East End is incredibly difficult and there's a lot of challenges that go along with it. And I'm here just to ask you to consider the, the, the possibility of expanding the position from what I believe is a two-fits position to a larger position. In my opinion, and I've been an athletic director, as I was an athletic director at a smaller neighboring school, is a really, really difficult job. It is far more than people think it is. And I think, you know, I could ramble on about what it is, but in the interest of time, I won't. But I could supply you with a list. It's far more than people think it is. And I think expanding the position would not only allow the person more time to do their job, but I believe it will open your candidate pool. I, I know there are some retired A's in the district, in the, in the area, that perhaps for a three-fits job, they might take this, the salary for two-fits. I don't think you get them out of retirement, just a thought. And I would hope that when you do advertise the position and then any, any open coaching positions we have, that you do it far and wide, that we can, so that we can find the best people possible for our student athletes. And I want to add one thought, this is a little bit personal for me, is that the other night at the esports awards, one nice moment that happened was that there was a video shared that Kyle McGowan, who was a Pearson alumni, and it was a very nice video that I asked him if he could send a 10 to 20 second video and it was probably a minute long, it was a very nice message he sent to this kid. So if you don't know, Kyle was drafted by the Los Angeles Angels in 2015 and is a member of the Washington Nationals World Championship team from 2019. But do you know what number he wore? And it's a shame, none of our kids do. It should be on our wall. So that'll be something that I think, I think it's been an oversight. I've never really thought about it, but we have a lot of numbers on our wall for people who scored 1,000 points, which is awesome, but Kyle's a major league baseball player. And there's not a thing in the gym. That's just an oversight, that's probably nobody's fault and nobody even thought about it. But I wanted to mention it. I have to apologize, I'm going to pick up my child from basketball practice now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Christine Sampson. I'm the deputy managing editor and education reporter at the East Hampton Star. And I just want to say thank you to Yorgos and Chris. It's been a pleasure getting to know you two and you're, you've made lots of memorable contributions and helped me do my job. So thank you so much. And I want to continue, so I'm kind of breaking the fourth wall rule of journalism where we don't get involved in our stories, right? But I have to say something so wonderful about Pearson students and, you know, Ms. Perry, I know that you know this, but you have such great kids at Pearson. And some of them are involved in TeenZine, which is a student-produced magazine for the Guild Hall Teen Arts Council. And it's a group of about 30 kids from Pearson, East Hampton and Ross. And this is, this is their second edition of TeenZine. I left some with Mary for the board members and any administrators who would like one, I can give you some. But this takes on the issue of discrimination and the history of slavery on the East End, which is only starting to really be publicized, come out. And so this collaboration, I'm one of their mentors, but the kids did this. You know, they did interviews, they did original artwork, photography. There's a little video going around social media if you are on that terrible, terrible thing of social media. But, um, so I just wanted to share that with you because these kids are great and definitely check it out. Thank you.
Hands here, public interficher, is there any comments in the chat box or man's race?
No, they're not standing.
And we will now move back to our agenda item number five, which is the superintendent's report. Yes, so we were scheduled at the last Board of Education meeting to, to talk about our progress in our collaboration with Mashasheun Park. And we put that off because we wanted to meet one more time, the school committee with the park board committee and the architects, this sort of refines some of the planned components. So tonight, Severio and Kelly from H2M are here to provide an overview of where we're at with the design, which for the most part is final. There are some minor alterations that will certainly take place between now and going out to the public for a bond referendum. But we thought it was important that the public lay eyes on what we have in mind for the park. And so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Severio.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief update of this passionate discussion and sort of meetings that we've had the last couple of weeks regarding the Mashasheun Park project. If anybody can't hear me, just let me know and I'll speak a little louder. Just wanted to start out with a little bit of some history about the park. I'm sure everybody here is familiar with the Mashasheun Park, but I think what's important about what that park stands for is important about the process that we've been through in developing the athletic field project for it. Pretty much starting in 1908, the Sag Harbor Benefactress, Ms. Russell Sage, she began her passionate route to develop a place that would be conducive and encouraging for children's both mental and physical development, as well as improvement of our children and our young kids. And she was doing that in a way of providing opportunities for a wholesome recreational environment. And that passion would ultimately become named the Mashasheun Park. And in 1920, the Sage Foundation, founded by Mrs. Russell Sage, was deeded to the Park and Recreation Association, about 45 acres. And thereafter, shortly thereafter, became a partnership with the school district and the park, which has lasted for decades. So keeping that in mind, that was part of the collaborative thought process for developing this project. Next slide, I'm sure, like I said, everybody is probably familiar with this work. The, everybody's familiar with the Mashasheun Park. I just wanted to give an overview of the existing park as it stands now. The park provides numerous amenities to the community and to the school district, which includes baseball, softball, Little League, tennis, walking trails, all kinds of amenities for the park. And they currently preside in various spaces throughout the park, throughout the process, throughout the park itself. Some of the challenges of working within the park. First of all, the largest challenge that we have was maintaining and preserving the open space and the natural beauty of the park. That was an ultimate idea that was carried through with every decision, as far as any decisions that were made regarding the athletic components and the revitalization or upgrades that we were looking to do at the park, was really to maintain and preserve that open space and the natural beauty of the park. As everybody knows, the Mashasheun Park, or you may not know, is located within the Long Pond Greenbelt, which is known as one of New York State's most environmentally significant areas due to its significant long-term growth and long-term forested areas within it. So it is, definitely has a high significance in New York State's environmental area. One of the challenges also was to provide all of the amenities and meet the needs of the athletics department. One of the challenges also was to provide all of the amenities and meet the needs of the athletics departments for not only the school district, but also the community. So we'll go through, as I get later on in the presentation, what that list of amenities of the school district and community were built for in the park. We also wanted to ensure that there was minimal disturbance to the existing park services and the surrounding residential areas, ponds, trails, and the cross-country paths that weave their way throughout the park. So it was very important to make sure that whatever we did to the park was also going to have minimal disturbance to the way the park currently functions and the way the park operates. What was also a significant challenge to this project was coordinating the various municipalities and agencies that are involved. There are local agencies, including the Sag Harbor Planning Board, the Building Department, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the D E C, the local Waterfront Revitalization Program, that's a New York State program, or what's known as an L W R P, and a Stormwater Prevention Plan Program, which is also administered by the Department of Environmental Conservation. So as part of this process, there are other public agencies that are involved with approval and review of the plans and qualifications, as well as the overall layout for the park. So it was quite a very complicated process that we had, that's needed to go through. The list of things. So once we established what the criteria was and the local agencies that we needed to be involved with, then came the long discussions with the school district and the park committee to determine what are the list of needs? What are the things that we want to see in the park as part of this revitalization? And this is a list that you're seeing up here. First, they need the ability to hold regulation track and field events in the park. We also needed a regulation-sized field hockey field. We also needed a varsity baseball field, pitching cage and dugouts. They were going to reuse the existing batting cage that is there. We also wanted the ability to have a practice soccer field somewhere in the development. We also needed a junior varsity baseball field with dugouts as well. They were also looking for two softball fields, one capable of housing Little League games, both with a sixty and seventy-five foot bat pass that could also accommodate Little League. They also needed two field houses or comfort stations, both of them which would contain toilet facilities, one which would contain storage for the obvious, for equipment and field event equipment that needs to be stored, as well as a concession stand and one of the other field houses. They were also looking for a bus drop-off in staging area, an area where five or six buses could queue up, allow athletes to depart from the buses, enter into the park, and then at the end of the event, be able to board back onto the buses and leave. They're also looking for emergency vehicular field access in case of, if there's an issue or injury on the field, they needed some way to be able to direct emergency vehicles onto the field to be able to provide service. They were also looking for scoreboards and portable bleachers throughout all of the field areas. They're also looking for an additional storage shed. In addition to the storage sheds that are already onsite, they were looking for one additional one, about ten by twenty in size, to be able, again, to house a lot of the equipment that they'll need to store with these improved fields. And then they were also looking for some type of stadium lighting and security and data capabilities. Stadium lighting, they're looking to illuminate the varsity baseball field, the larger of the two softball fields, the field hockey field, and as long as illuminating those, illuminating the track and providing walkway lighting for the local community that would be able to also use that track when field events aren't being used, of two sets of lighting or secondary lighting. I'll discuss how that's accomplished in the slides going forward. What was our approach? Well, we took the list of all of the agencies that we needed to deal with. We met with the school district, the administrators, athletic facilities, as well as our board, and then we came up with an approach. How do we accomplish that? So we did just that by meeting with all of the agencies involved. We looked to confirm the scope and to manage expectations for this type of project. We developed various layouts and options, and through consensus tonight, what I'm presenting is the option that we feel best meets the needs of both the student athlete as well as the community at large. And it has truly been a partnership between the park board and the school district through this entire process. And that should be noted and commended, that there was such unity and such decisiveness across the board to be able to make a large project like this come from reality into what we hope is fruition. We also collaborated with Mr. Ed Hollander and his team on layouts and ways to, again, preserve the natural and open space as well as maintain natural plantings, as we get a little bit further into the images that I'm going to show, as well as the final construction documents. Mr. Hollander will also be involved in developing those further and giving his input in how do we maintain natural fauna and maintain the natural habitats that are within the park itself. We also consulted with the New York State Department of D E C. We conducted a preliminary meeting with them to ensure that our thoughts and that our process was something that would fit within the requirements that they had. Again, there are a lot of issues regarding the sensitive nature of the park, and we wanted to make sure that what we were working on and what we were working towards was something that would be accepted and approved and embraced by the Department of Environmental Conservation. We also consulted with Dr. William Bowman from Land Use Ecological Services. He helped us in determining the State Quality Review Act, or what is known as CEQA, which is a process that every school district has to make a determination when embarking upon a capital improvement. And through that review and through that analysis, they were able to determine that the CEQA was a Type One action and that it really had no adverse impact on the environment that went along through that. But they looked at not only the CEQA, but also other environmental concerns within the park, such as, like I mentioned earlier, fauna, natural habitat of animals, preserving open space, adjacencies to wetlands. All of these items were also looked at by Dr. Bowman in determining and helping us in determining CEQA and that process. Continuing our approach, we also completed a full environmental impact statement, which is also known in the industry as an E I S. That was to ensure that an in-depth review was conducted. Although, as I'll talk a little bit about this next sentence, being a Type One CEQA action, a full environmental assessment form was not required under CEQA guidelines, however. To be proactive, the school district and the park board authorized conducting that full E I S to make sure that everything was looked at when we were doing our investigation and planning out this process. The result of that investigation or the result of that process discharacterized itself as a Type One action and resulted in no adverse effect on the environment. And the last real part of our approach was having a sensitive development to what's about thirteen acres. It's about twelve point nine acres of the total, forty-five acres that is being disturbed, this part of the proposed project. But we wanted to make sure that whatever work we were doing was being done in a very sensitive nature to the existing park. Our development. So what you see here is an overall rendering right now of the park layout and the amenities that we talked about. So what I'm going to do just for orientation, I'm going to say that north is straight up. Although true north, we all know, is to the right, just for purposes of discussion, you know, to identify north to the top of the page is just easier when describing all of the amenities. The first and foremost thing that I think you see that's different within the park is the four-hundred-meter track that you see in the center of the park. Just backing up one second, what I hope everybody can see is that the development of all of the amenities that we're proposing for the park fit within the already developed area of the park, which is limiting to almost no deforesting or removal of any of the tree line in those areas. So if I just back up just to give everybody an idea, this is the existing park. So you see this area where I'm outlining in the laser pointer is already cleared and opened area within the park. When you go back to our development or the development that we came across as the final one, you can see that all of those items, again, fit within the existing cleared area within the park. So there's no new deforesting or no new intrusion into local animal habitats within the park area. But you see that one of the main priorities, or one of the main things that you'll see is this four-hundred-meter track that is placed in the center, which is pretty much the center of the park, I'll call it. That is a four-hundred-meter, six-lane track that allows them to be able to hold athletic events, track and field events. There's also two D zones, which are the two zones on the opposite ends of the field, which house the field events. Those field events are long jump, triple jump, and high jump, will also be located there. It's a synthetic turf or synthetic rubber track surface, natural grass infill. All of the fields that you see are all natural grass, but it is a synthetic rubber surface, which obviously has a longer-lasting surface, and it's permanently striped. So all of the lanes are permanently striped, all the markings for track events are permanently striped on it, not something that you have to do every time you do an event. It is a true six-lane field with a one-meter offset around the track. To the left, you'll see that there are two softball fields, but I'll say which is to the west side. There are two softball fields, one which has an outfield dimension of two hundred and ten feet and one which has an outfield dimension of two hundred and fifty. One is a little larger than the other, for men's softball leagues play on one of the softball fields. And so we wanted to make sure that we still be able to accommodate that community activity within this softball field as well. The two large fields that you see, this would be the varsity baseball field located in the southeast portion of the park. That is a three hundred and seventy-five outfield dimension with three hundred and ten to the right and left field sides. It includes a pitching mound as well as dugouts, and that would be the varsity field. This would be a JV baseball field, three hundred and fifty feet to the outfield fence, center field, as well as three hundred and five feet to first and third base side. Also with dugouts and pitching mound as well for JV. One of the comfort stations would be located in the north portion of the facility. That would also house the concession stand, where community and when public events are being held, it'd be the ability for people to come up to the concession stand and to be able to get refreshments as well as to be able to use toilet facilities in that north side. There's also a second concession stand and storage building here located on the west side of the property, located between the softball fields. That would also house a storage facility. Many of the events, the hurdles, the high jump pads, the long jump pads, all of those items that are used within the track area would also then be stored directly adjacent to that field area as well. So for purposes of it being close or adjacent to the field, that's why we located that field house there. You could also say that there is an access road. This provides us with that emergency vehicle access that we were looking to get. We're taking out the old asphalt road that exists there now and replacing it with a gravel route, getting sensitive to the nature of the park and not putting something that's permanent, something that allows drainage throughout the park area, as well as is less intrusive than putting in a paved road in that area. Locating the varsity field here and having a three hundred and seventy-five-foot outfield required reorienting and reconfiguring the existing parking lot. So if anybody's driven in that parking lot, the parking lot surface is a little bit beat up. It's a little confusing with the way the parking lot is striped. So we would look to repave this entire lot, reorient the spaces, restripe it, provide new drainage, the curbs around it, really do a complete recall of this existing parking lot here. The two tennis courts that you see, those are existing and called to remain. There will be no work done to those, as well as any of the other activities or amenities that are happening in the northeast portion of the park. In the upper area, this north section, this is where the bus drop-off would be located, having access directly to Main Street, which is the road that runs along the north edge of the parking lot that we buses would be able to, the park, excuse me, that we buses would be able to enter and exit onto Main Street. There would be enough room for about five or six buses to queue, nose to tail in that space to allow students to deploy off of those buses and to be able to regroup to those buses when the activities are over. We located it here, having as little impact of vehicular movement throughout the park by keeping it on the perimeter of the park adjacent to an already existing main road that runs along that north side, Main Street, as I mentioned. This is the overall layout of the park. Another view, just again, looking at the regulation-sized field hockey field as well as the four-hundred-meter track. You can see the two softball fields, as we talked about. The one comfort station with the storage area, you're looking down here at the JV field, and up in the upper left-hand corner would be the Boston field. So here's a view looking at that. You can see, again, that all of this work is happening within pretty much the extensive of the already cleared area of the park. It's just really a matter of recreating new drainage and reorganizing the fields in a manner that's conducive to the layout that we wanted it to be. Here's another view looking, I can say, from the grandstand side, if you're looking from what I'll call the south side. If you remember, looking north is being up. Again, you have the varsity field here, the JV varsity field here, the track, the multi, the field hockey field, and again, the two softball fields. The light poles that you see in this rendition, as I had mentioned before, one of the lists of requirements that the park board and the school district was looking for was to illuminate three fields. The upper softball field, the larger softball field, and the upper northwest portion of the field, that's the two hundred and fifty-foot field. The varsity baseball field here in the lower right-hand corner, as well as the track and field, which would have not only stadium lights for the field, but also walkway lights for pedestrians or for the community that would want to just walk the track prior to dusk or as the light goes down. The lighting is all controlled via cell phone technology now, so we'll easily be able to accommodate and control lighting so as to keep minimal spray or overspray of the lighting to the adjoining community and roadways to a minimum. But it does provide the ability to use these fields longer into the day, which is something that's been as well.
Can I interrupt for a sec? I know that when you spoke to the park board committee and the school board committee, there was extensive discussion about the lighting, and one of the things that you had said was that the technology with regard to lighting has really changed in the last decade or so. So much so that the point you made about having minimal impact on surrounding areas is very...
Yeah, the lighting, obviously, the current technology is LED lighting, and it's actually laser pointed, they call it, where they actually go up onto the light poles and they take a laser and they direct the lighting as much as they can onto the field. So it is purely shining down on the fields. They call it dark sky technology, which is technology that reduces the amount of light that's emitted from the top of the lights that creates that glow over fields that you see when they're illuminated. So that would be greatly reduced in this type of setting using that type of technology. We did also, though, talk about part of the project is to put infrastructure in place to be able to illuminate the other fields if needed. But right now, the only fields that would be illuminated are the three that I mentioned. But there would be infrastructure in place, and if in a future time we wanted to illuminate some of the other fields, it's better to do it now when we're digging it up and cleaning up the drainage. So we know where all of that is rather than trying to go back later and trying to work around all of that subsurface material and drainage systems that we've been putting in. This is just an example of the backstop that you see, and as Mr. Nichols had mentioned, obviously, the layouts are pretty far developed, but there's still minor tweaks, locations of the of the session stands, the exact dimensions of the dugout, all of those. Okay, it worked out as we get a little bit further into the construction brackets. It's a little hard to see, but in the outfield corner, you can see that there is a scoreboard out there. So there are actually two scoreboards proposed for all of the fields. Those scoreboards will be multi-use and multi-faced, so they can also service the track and field behind the baseball field so that one scoreboard can be used by both the baseball fields as well as the track and field events. And there'll be a second scoreboard located within the two softball fields so that that scoreboard could then again be used by both softball fields out on the west side of the park. Just another image of looking at one of the varsity field and the JV field. And you can see in the middle, the way the lighting is laid out, it gives us the ability to stripe a practice soccer field within the outfield of the two baseball fields. That was important to be able to have some flexibility and to be able to provide that soccer field or that practice soccer field. So again, the thought was to utilize those outfield when those two sports are not being used. We can easily utilize that to be striped for soccer. The outfield fences in those two areas will be set asleep, so those fences can be put up and removed when needed. So when there are events that are happening, you can actually house two games at the same time, a varsity baseball game and a JV varsity, JV game at the same time. But it was important to try to be able to create a third field. And by carefully placing the lighting and orienting these two fields, we were able to accommodate that practice field within the two fields. But it costs. So obviously, the big question that comes up is, well, how much does all of this cost? Well, it sounds like a great idea, but how much is this? We looked at breaking it out into some of the main areas of the project, so athletic fields in So athletic fields ingrading is one of the main components of the cost. That includes subsurface drainage, irrigation, seeding and sodding, clay for all of the infield. When we talk about athletic fields, we talk about full complement of all the services. About six point five million dollars worth of work associated there. The support buildings, which are those two comfort stations and the one storage building that we talked about. That not only house one comfort station, meaning toilets, also houses a storage and a concession stand is one point seven five million dollars. All of those buildings also has Wi, also will have Wi-Fi capability and the ability to transmit that Wi-Fi throughout the park. So cell phones and people's iPads and scoring devices can be utilized throughout the park. Keep in mind, all the scoreboards are also wireless. So that also comes off of Wi-Fi. So they're able to control, put messages up, change the displays on the scoreboards or all wireless. But to be able to do that, we need Wi-Fi within the park area and that's what will also be housed in those support disciplines. In those support structures. Paving roads and drainage, obviously, we talked about renovating the existing parking lot, which needed to be revamped and restripe. We also have the access road for the emergency vehicles as well as the bus loop that I talked about on the northwest, on the north portion of it, right adjacent to Main Street. That comes in at about two point seven five million dollars worth of work. Also athletic field lighting, we talked about illuminating the three fields. So the larger softball field, the varsity baseball field and the field and the track and the field. As well as the secondary lighting for the track only, for being able to walk along that. As well as security lighting on all of the sub, all of the comfort stations, the storage buildings, the ability to have security cameras throughout the park itself. All of that is two point one million dollars. The public address and sound system, we broke out separately because there is the thought about having a sound system within the park. So again, you'd be able to announce the games, you'd be able to put announcements up throughout events that are happening. That's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total budget cost right now of thirteen point five million dollars for the renovations that you see currently presented tonight. Again, just thank you and any questions?
Next, hold one second, ask any more questions.
Yeah, I have a few. So first of all, thank you so much. This is awesome. I'm really excited about this. And I'm guessing all my questions you've already thought about. But just because they're not in there, I feel like probably others will have these questions too. So first of all, a lot of people appreciate the store's value, the grandstand. So if you go into a little bit about, is that going to be renovated? So do you want to answer one question at a time and then I'll get to my other two?
Whatever you want me to do.
You go for that one and I'll.
Well, I think, let me just say a few things real quick and then maybe that'll answer some of the questions. But first of all, thanks, Saverio and Kelly for doing a thorough job with this. But in the beginning, I left out a few things in terms of providing some context for the presentation tonight. First, you know, going back a couple of years, many of the people in the community know that we're very lucky to have a partnership with the park. To have a facility in close proximity to the school that our kids have been able to play at for generations is truly a privilege. We did notice so that we needed to make improvements and that sort of resulted in this collaboration. Janine Briano was to my right, head president of the park board. And she sat down with the school beginning six months to a year ago, along with a couple of her colleagues on the park board. And I should mention that Rachel D, Mary Churchill, Meg Caboni, Mimi Arby and the representative from the village at Hay. And the focus really was to take the school's needs and the school's needs were dictated by conversations with the athletic director. Regarding what our facility needs were, short term and long term. Take those, those needs, convey them to the park board. And then the park board was very, very focused on trying to honor those needs within the plan without disturbing the aesthetic that currently exists. So in these, in these visuals, the renderings that you're looking at, although they're very thorough, they sort of have an industrial feel to it. The goal really all along was to maintain the natural grass, have some planting so that you will not have a different feel when you go down there in terms of the the natural beauty of the park. I just wanted to give that context, but go ahead and answer, Janine, if you want to answer the grandstand question.
Thank you for the question. Grandstands and the historic looking buildings, older buildings that desperately have to happen. Are going to be renovated by the park, those buildings are reserved off this plan. Number one, for a lot of reasons, my understanding is because they're made of wood, right? They're not, you couldn't even be part of development of the school. Apparently, that's not a substance that's, you know, a minimal to any development in any system. We have, I can say successfully, raised enough money to do phase one renovation of grandstand. Happy to answer that question, which we expect to begin construction in August. So just some final things. We are already starting and have some successful funds for phase two. So briefly, if you don't mind, I'll just tell you, the phase one would be restoring the railing, the roof. And all the seating and the front of the grandstand, which is used all the time. Phase two would be the re-pointing of the brick, the windows, the electric, the plumbing, restoring the locker room and that bathroom. And that will be done by the park. So we're fundraising for that certain. So those buildings you see behind the field, the varsity baseball field, those will all be renovated by the park. And with the help of the community and other, you know, grants that we've been able to get. So we're starting the renovation of grandstand very shortly, very excited and already started raising money. So that separate apart from this.
That's awesome and thanks for explaining all that because I think it's a really important distinction that everybody understands that that works. Then just the two other kind of questions slash comments. One is just even though it's not in the fields, they get used for cross-country needs. So just in terms of how that access is going to work, I just want to make sure that you guys thought about that.
We did, any of the development that's shown here has no effect on the cross-county, the cross-county trails that are run throughout the park itself. We were very conscious in the very early stages of the park project. There were some, some options, some renovations that showed the fields oriented in different ways. And they were going to have an impact on some of the trails that were in the forested area as well as cross-country. So what we ended up doing was reconfiguring that to make sure that the layout that you see here has no impact on that. There is some upgrades, there are some areas where the trails need a little bit of TLC. And we're going to be providing that as part of the project, but we're not altering or or renovating any of those trails that will remain intact. So that'll, that'll remain as a component.
Great, and then just the last thing is with all the additional lighting, they look like really good homes for ospreys. And then that can also go sour fast. There was in my neighborhood, a a not so lovely, you know, fire between lights and osprey nests and that had to be put out. So just want to make sure I know that done the environmental impact, but just want to make sure that, you know, the additional platforms that I think are already in the park. For right, right now, there are like one or two platforms for ospreys, I think. So I just want to make sure that they're going to be kept so that they provide the right habitat.
Yeah, I mean, I would tend to say that I guarantee that ospreys. Yeah, the configuration of the light poles and later technology provides surfaces that are not very conducive to them building nests there as well as any type of large bird. We're going to go with that, but obviously, if they do nest, they do nest unfortunately, it's in a natural environment.
Yeah, no, totally get that and you can't actually control it. I just, there's a lot of things people do out here to somehow get them to go on the platforms and on the lights and stuff.
Yeah.
Any other board questions?
I've got a couple.
Sure.
First of all, the presentation was fabulous, but thank you so much and seeing it visually is really, really helpful. And thank you to the park board for working with us to do this because I know it's been a lot of thoughtful discussions back and forth to get to where we are. In terms of the parking being reconfigured, is it the same amount of spots that will be there that are there now?
Yes, actually, we'll get a little bit more spots. Because right now, if you've ever been in that parking lot, I would, I just want to say that the striping, sometimes maybe a little haphazard in some areas. Some of the striping is worn away, right, by by putting space things at the, at the right spacing as well as orienting and reconfiguring that parking lot. Will actually increase the parking spaces that are there. I don't have the total number off the top of my head, but as we get through that, I'd like to settle with you, but we will not see a diminish or any reduction in parking in that area.
That'd be great because the, with the addition of the track, I would imagine we have more visitors coming. So having additional parking is helpful and having the buses coming in a different area. It'll also free up the parking lot to not have that congestion as well. So I think that's really thoughtful. In terms of the two softball fields, is one a varsity size and one a JV size? Or because JV and varsity softball, I think of the same size, right?
Correct.
So how are they sized? Because I understand that with the baseball, they're two different sizes.
The one in, one in the back.
The top left one looks larger.
Correct, this one is larger because apparently men's softball leagues play on that field. So that needed a two hundred and fifty foot outfield fence where the softball field that's closer to you or or down towards the edge of the so both from here, so two hundred and ten.
So both fields could house games.
Yes. So both a regulation for varsity softball?
Correct, both could house varsity softball, but the upper field still has the capacity to host men's softball as well.
Correct, a tournament of that, of that type that needs a little bit of a further.
And those, they're going to be softball, having some dugouts as well?
Correct.
That's great. And then in terms of visitor seating, I mean, right now, there are metal stands that are moved to different parts of the field. Is part of this to get some new equipment to do that?
Part of this process is also for portable bleachers that would be able to be moved around based upon, so yes.
Great, just because, because we had some, at least the last time I was there, which was, it's been a couple of years, but some of them were not were a bit worn and and not in great shape. So I'm glad that that's being incorporated.
And I think that's it. And if I could just follow up, as Mr. Nichols had mentioned, right now, it's sort of the overview of the, of the plant, right? So it looks a little industrial. As we develop a little bit further and renderings that will, that I'm assuming that we'll be presenting, will show more of a scaled version of a person like walking through the park and being able to see, because there are some retaining walls that we need around the fields due to the topography. And if you've been to the park, right, you know that there's, there's definitely a great change between where one of the smaller baseball, the newer baseball field is and the lower varsity baseball field is. Yeah, exactly, it rolls up to. So for us to create this flat area where there's a field in the middle of that, obviously, we need to bring fill-in to raise and lower and then inflate those grades. So there are some retaining walls that are being constructed throughout the park as well. They will be stone with natural, with like a blue stone coping that'll be able to provide areas for people to sit on. And so there'll be some additional seating built into the way in which the topography of the park is working as well. So it's not all going to be grandstands and bleachers. One of the concerns of the park was how do we create an environment that's inviting to people to be, to be able to come and put down a blanket or sit on a small, a small wall and watch a game or something like that. So that's also incorporated into the thought process of this. It's just when we get into a little bit more of the detailed renderings, we'll start to see those images emerge.
You mentioned there's three fields currently slated to be lit. That's the varsity baseball, the track and the varsity softball?
The varsity baseball in the lower right hand corner, the men's softball field of the larger of the, of the varsity softball fields in the upper left handed corner. And then the track and field in the center.
Right, because I know with varsity softball, there are times when it gets dark, so we'd be able to.
So they'd be able to use that field and play on that.
You referenced that it would be cheaper during construction to put the foundation for additional lighting that could be added in the future.
Yes.
So what's that decision process?
Decision process is we will provide conduit to the potential locations of where future pole bases would be located. Conduit, we have drag lines to be able to pull electric power to it. And the electric service that we would provide to the, to the park would be sized with the ability to handle the added capacity.
Do an upgrade and does this cost include that foundation?
Yes.
Neutralized?
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
We did want to ask you, you know, of course, I got the same thing when I first saw you, you're very industrial. I would say the retaining walls, is this going to be any of these on landscaping based on the provision?
Yes, without doubt, we're working with Mr. Hollander on that as well. And as we develop the renderings, you'll start to see, you know, as we scale down into closer to those images. You'll see plantings and and trees that are going to be planted and presented throughout the entire park. Right now, this was just the sort of like the overall layout of what it is. We'll get into more detail aspects of it in future.
Would you extend again the surface, so you said it's going to be grass and then it's going to be also some?
The, all of the fields that you said are going to be natural grass, right? With clay in fields for all of the baseball and softball fields. So it will be clay and natural grass. We're also providing irrigation throughout the park as well, right? Because once we put the grass, we need to water it to keep it green and to keep it growing. The only thing that will be a synthetic material will be the track. It's a synthetic rubberized surface that gets permanently striped. So you don't have to go out there and stripe the track every time you have a field event or something like that. So that would be a rubberized surface. It's also less maintenance associated with that. And and thinking that the community would want to use that after hours or when field events aren't happening. It's a, it's a much smoother, softer, cushiony surface for people to walk in and run on. So that, that makes sense for that to be a synthetic surface.
Now, I think as, as Mr. Hollander gets involved, Janine, part of the, the discussions we've had is that the landscaping will provide also some separation within the fields.
The idea would be to, once we have field design and he's seen the road design, knowing whether he has the time to play. Just recently, you know, had to figure out where dugouts would go, where, you know, where the bathroom would be, you know, how many, how, just recently. Currently decided where that loop would be for the buses because it paid us a lot putting it there and knowing that we have a dedicated space. Keeping that in his mind, he'll take a look at where those buildings are and where those are and what types of plants, what's, what's going to be the system of the park for best. And we'll soften it up, you know, you don't want to see just continual flat surface. You're going to want dry softened, to the extent that there'll be some, you know, railroad ties, you know, vegetation around those to soften it up. And also we want to make it available to people to sit on, so we're going to try to minimize any text, you know, or various kinds of those kinds of things, but we do want to have some vegetation. We, you know, really very far legged and something like.
I have to applaud adding a second bathroom in that field. Because there were many times when you were across that park and trying to get a little kid across the field was a treacherous event. So kudos.
For the ball season, Severio, sorry, you ever stood?
Oh, no, no.
The soccer fields, you mentioned there was one soccer and one field hockey field. Are those combined in the center of the track? And there was a practice field that was shown on one of the aerial images in the baseball fields. Is that soccer alone or is that soccer?
The, the, the field in the middle of the track is, is field hockey. And the field between the two baseball diamonds will be the soccer field. So we use it as a practice field as well as a game field.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's going to be a full-size soccer field.
Yes.
Yes. Very, very close to where it is where it's historically been at the park, but obviously just with recreating and bringing out the quality of it.
And the way the lighting is configured on the two fields, that field would also be illuminated just by having the lights on the two fields on. You could use that, you know, that, that, that outfield, those outfield are fully illuminated, so you could consider that field also illuminated.
The soccer, boys and girls soccer, are some going to be playing here and some will be played there, right? We're not dependent on the park for soccer as a sport because we need many more than one field to accomplish that.
Yes.
Can we, can we have two games back here at once or just one?
One.
This one?
But the majority of games, we should be able to utilize this, this area. Again, those were discussions with the AD, Mr. Bramoff and then Mr. McGovern, primarily Mr. Bramoff. And we came up with the facility needs to share with the park board. And then the other comment is, and Severio touched upon it, that the two softball fields have the flexibility to also, and it's not the school's focus, but it is a community focus, so I'm speaking for the park to host little league games as well. So there's flexibility there where those little league teams will have those fields to use as well.
So one last question, so the budget we have right now, the payment happens, that's based on all these plans that we've received there, right?
Correct.
And as we modify, we add the landscaping, things like that, then things are going to move up.
There's money in there for landscaping.
Oh, so you have already.
Yes, we allocated, you know, we incorporated money into the budget to, to incorporate Mr. Hollander's, you know, thoughts into it. You know, could it move a little bit, but right now, that's, that's the number.
So the thought is having the vote in about three months, a couple of votes?
The thought would be, yeah, to do quick math, about three months. And then the talk with the park board or the park negotiating committee and the school committee. And Severio was, to the extent possible, to stage the construction to minimize the impact to both the park. during their busy season, but also our athletic program. So if everything goes according to plan, the 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 real impact would be probably next spring to our sports potentially. And we'd have to stage to the extent that we can, perhaps the bottom of all.
Right. Yeah, obviously, there's still the permitting process that we're going through. So like I mentioned before, there are quite a few agencies that are involved with that process. So really depending upon when all the permits come in, depending what time of the year or season that's in, that would help to dictate where we start construction. Obviously, you would love to start from the left side and work your way out, right? But that may not be the case depending upon when we get all of the permits. So but we would want to stage where we would be able to safely do construction as well as keeping other park activities open if if that works. So once we know where we stand, then we'll come up with a, you know, a detailed phasing plan of how the construction would happen.
The district may want to consider having a a special meeting that's a workshop on this prior to the vote because I think there are many people that don't normally come to board meetings but are in the community and have have questions and opinions about this potential project. And that might that might get more understanding in the community. That could be beneficial.
I I envision doing just that as well as outreach meetings, much like you could do with the budget, you know, appearing before various community citizens that are active. So they have the opportunity to ask the question, understand what it is that we're asking their support for. Any other board questions? I'm going to ask if anyone's here to have a question too, since we have a presentation. Board question? Are there any questions in the message or online?
Yeah, it was a question regarding how much contingency is in the budget?
Currently, right now, we're we're accommodating five percent inflation, which is consistent with what we see in this post-COVID era and 10% contingency. That's a typical industry construction practice for 10% construction contingency.
Total 10% or total 15%?
15% total, 10% construction contingency, 5% inflation.
And if you have anything else to add, I didn't know if you.
Oh, cool. So I wanted to say. Very, we're very dedicated. Meeting process, information exchange process, the walkway, you know, with all of our covered questions. Thank you for all of your patience. I know you come to a lot of meetings. Chris, I want to wish you and your good luck, by the way. Thank you for everything. I want to thank Severio and Kelly who get my multiple emails on a regular basis. I can't get, but I know the answers are coming from you guys. And the park board is so thankful that they're there for us. I want to forgive me for sometimes not raising the questions correctly, but this is not my forte. But I'm getting better at it and I'm learning a lot along the way. So I just wanted to be here this evening to support, you know, the presentation for the school, knowing that it's serving the community and the school and our children and our athletic people, spectators, and the community hopefully will enjoy whatever it is we're going to provide. That's what Parker thinks. Therefore, Severio had that very still learned in the beginning about how the park came to fruition, we're trying to serve that need and all the needs that go along as we evolve into, you know, decades. Have when, you know, first, you know, when the park first came together and this sage assembled, all those lots together and moved all those houses and put everybody where she wanted them. She was quite a fan of the nation. And we'd like to honor that. We feel very comfortable that, you know, the school was also part of her plan. So it's interesting how we all come together. So I'd like to thank everyone for being a part of a true partnership. I like the marriage, some days sixty-four days, some days fifty, fifty, some days a hundred zero. But that's really what makes, you know, cooperative effort work. And I just wanted to say thank you, Severio. It's really great presentation. I know it's not easy. I know it's a long journey. So thank you. And Kelly, thank you again.
All right. Thanks, Severio.
Thank you all.
Nice agenda. Education report. Thanks, Ryan. So tonight, we're going to do an educational presentation down into a couple of different segments. The first will be the instructional response to COVID-19. We had talked to the board about some of the challenges and some of the adjustments that we had to make and some of the the adjustments that we didn't know we would have to make. So tonight, we're going to break it down into an elementary as well as middle high school presentation. And then we're going to follow that up with Mr. Guinan, who's the I V director, talking about the current status of the I V program. We'll review some assessment information from not this current spring or last spring because that's the most recent information. And then we'll have an opportunity for people to ask questions. So let's see if this works. Who can? Let me just hit the next slide, Scott, from where you are. So Mr. Malone is is away this week. This is typically the week that he's not in district. So he, in in preparation for this meeting, created a couple of slides. So in terms of the in terms of some of the, yeah, I think that's the, oh, the challenges was the first one. So he identified the areas that were problematic or challenging. One of them was the continuity of instruction. And that was really impacted by the number of absences on the part of students and faculty and staff. As everyone's aware, when we were dealing with COVID, you have quarantines, you have isolations, and there was a time time that we, at our at our peak, were really worried about whether or not we could remain in person because of the number of quarantines and isolations that were impacting staff. Thankfully, we were able to get through that. And we continue to closely monitor that situation. And hopefully, it won't be as much of a challenge moving forward, but it certainly impacted us this past year. The safety protocols limited the instructional models. So at the elementary school, the small group instruction was was not quite the same as what it had been in the past. Cross-class groups that maybe collaborated between sections or groups collaborating could not happen to the extent that we had to cohort students. And hopefully, again, we can sort of ease out of that if the pandemic continues to act the way it has over the last couple of months. It obviously limited staff movement through the building as well because not only did we have to cohort the students, but we had to be cognizant of limiting the interaction of staff throughout the building as well. Definitely, that is, COVID definitely impacted our music program and our instrumental program. Band orchestra and guitar were limited, and the performing arts programs were greatly impacted as well. And Mr. Malone has indicated that, conditions permitting, that we're going to move back to pre-COVID conditions more and more next year. And then finally, the the technology used, the screen time of, obviously, all of that increased. And there's a negative attached to that. And so Mr. Malone has indicated that he's going to focus on limiting screen time moving forward. And that'll be an adjustment next year. Next slide, Mr. Fisher. So what have we done in terms of trying to address some of the things that the elementary school has faced and challenges? The amount of tutorial support has grown exponentially, and you'll see that quantified in a later slide, middle school, high school. But because of learning loss and the adjustments, we've had to increase tutorial support. We've had to increase remedial tutoring K through five. We've added a summer academy, twenty-one, twenty-two for all students, grades two and up. The bands, the orchestra showcases, all those types of things. We moved outside to to where Mr. Malone did to provide some more flexibility related to that. And I think moving forward, we're probably going to try to hold on to that as much as we can because we found that to be nice. And, you know, Mr. Malone can comment on this more at a subsequent meeting, but he he did share that with me. And then finally, we want to maintain with regard to to the to technology, the ability to to go remote if we have to. But we really want to limit the extent to which students are spending time on the screen. And Mr. Malone in subsequent meetings will be talking about some of the other initiatives that that he has planned for next year. But I can't go into to great detail answering questions because I'm just not as perky to the details as Mr. Malone is, but there are general questions he can attempt to answer that.
Okay.
No, ahead, I'll go forward first, Chris.
I just have one, which is, and this is not surprising, but but it's I think it's helpful just to 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 hear it. Did we see a needed increase in in kind of the emotional piece of guidance and other things? Because I know that obviously academics were negatively impacted, but I kind of I know it was big emotional toll.
There was a big emotional toll, I think, on three different populations, the students, the parents, and the faculty and staff. So from from my position as superintendent, the feedback I got from the building administrators was that it was there was an increase in all three of those populations.
So we had increased support for that.
And and types of support that were new to the people providing the support because it was new to everybody. There are no other questions?
I just say it would probably be a later date if Mr. Malone or Ms. Green also just tell us what things are going to go back to normal and what things are going to.
Remain there. Yes. So, Ms. Carrier.
So, good evening, everyone. The middle high school transition from the pandemic to now limited restrictions with the pandemic, it's a little bit different. So I'm going to go through our historical data, what we did in our response to during the nineteen-twenty school year during the lockdown, we went when we went into lockdown and we sent everybody home. Our students were doing office hours at first, and then there were no regents exams. So that year, everybody was exempt from if they were to take regents, that's what they were having to do. And then then during the twenty-twenty-one year, when we were now living with the pandemic, our middle school students were in pods, so they were co-horted in small groups. They were able to create a great middle school community and culture because they were colored pods and they do did Railers Wars and such. But there was also that remote option, and it was synchronous learning because as we learned during the lockdown, office hours was not very conducive and giving middle school students that much time to do their studies, they would just finish them as quick as possible and then get off to video games or whatever they were into. While our high school students during the twenty-twenty-one school year, they were in a hybrid model. So they would do three days a week on here and then three days a week off. Or there was that remote option for families with their COVID comfort level that wanted to be learning from home. And then in March, we were able to have everybody allow in person. So they were able to come in every day. And again, it was a synchronous learning model. For the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year, this year, there was no remote option, but there was masks on at first until that mask mandate was lifted. And I do want to say during that twenty, the previously year, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and this year, we had for the majority of the year mass breaks. So that cut into instructional time. But we also wanted to make sure that we were, as Chris asked before, that social emotional, that well-being time to break out and also to see our children's faces outside, it was very necessary for that. This year, there were regents exams. The exception was for the new next generation U S history exam that was supposed to be on June first. The regents did not, they canceled that regents for us. I would have to say from the feedback from our teachers for all the assessments that are going on statewide, they seem to be a little bit different and maybe not as rigorous as they have been in the past. But that is just qualitative data from our teachers, but other teachers have said differently. But overall, it seems that they were, and that was definitely for the New York State grade three through eight that's been going on as well. So with all of this going on for the past three school years, we've been focusing on our number one is our student well-being, right? We want to make sure our kids are happy and healthy and safe and their social emotional well-being. If that's not intact, then they're not going to learn in here and then they're not going to perform where we where we need them to in order to grow as as learners. On the next, we learned is that screen time is apparent with all of them, and we need to balance that. I think during the pandemic, our children have adapted to being on their phone so much because that's how they communicated with their friends. We got to see that when we had the kids come back and there were no cell phones in the classroom. It was very interesting having them interacted socially because they didn't know how to at first and do those normal social interactions that they have and how to navigate differences and such. And then the biggest one is the executive functioning and organization. So that's just a fancy phrase that educators use for planning, time management, and organizing. And as a middle schooler, that's very important, especially because that's what you're learning during your middle years. And these past three years as a middle school student has been tough for these kids. And they've done an exceptional job, and our staff has done an exceptional job of teaching that organizational skill. And then in the high school, this goes even further as to balancing the different course loads and making sure each teacher has what they need from that student and organizing. And again, I have went back to the, now we have to go back to motivating our students to get into the rigor portion of it now that we have it and then accessing those content gaps and identifying those fundamental skills that we 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 have been working on. So our instructional pivots with all of that, I know I talked a lot, but our instructional pivots with all of that. So we're restructuring and the realignment of our sixth, grade six through twelve curriculum during our faculty meetings, our grade eighteen meetings, and our department meetings this year. This is what we've been focusing on, is identifying the skills necessary to be successful as students in our classroom. And those just don't go on with the content skills that they're learning, but the soft skills, right? How do we publicly speak? How do we ask questions appropriately? What skills do they need to build up from grade six through twelve in order to be a high school graduate that will be successful in their college and career? Then we focused on building fundamental skills, right, creating spaced for those core skills that have been interrupted. So again, that organization, those content skills that are necessary. So for example, those pre-algebra skills that they might have missed in seventh grade, but then it will affect them possibly in ninth grade when they're taking a geometry course, like where are those fundamental gaps? So we've added extra time in through our course offerings and also math labs and such in order to identify those. And then the reading and writing as well, those are those fundamental skills that are needed and necessary in order to be successful. And then last but not least, the increase in targeted academic support. Every week, we meet as with our school counselors, our school psychologists, our social worker, the assistant principals, myself and Dr. Mears. And we talk about every student, not just students that have individualized education plans, not just students that have five oh four plans, every student that we feel that might be needing our attention. So it could be a mental health thing. It could be, I think, they're not being challenged enough academically or they're struggling socially, or are they struggling in their classes? And how can we support them because they need more attention? And we need to make sure that we're supporting them in their academic growth. And so we reassess those every week. And there was an action plan more so than we used to do. So each person in that meeting has a list of what children they need to follow up with and parents as well in order to support them. Also, this year, we switched up how we do academic support. So academic support is our last period of the day. It is a over a little bit over thirty minutes, and that's time for students to either work on homework, get extra help, maybe review. We realized in the middle high school that after every quarter, we reassessed who was in what academic support to make sure if they needed extra time in a science class, that then they were put in the science academic support. If they were struggling in English, then they were put in the English academic support. We really felt that was helpful in order to identify and fix and have an action plan with those students that need that extra help. So and then we also did six through twelve, these academic curriculum enrichment courses. Usually, we don't offer. Usually, we don't offer them in the high school. It's a time for learning how to organize yourself, but it's also a time to get one-on-one teacher help in order to gain more access to understand what fundamentals are being skipped and are that the child needs help on. And then that's that teacher doing so. So I'm going to ask Ms. Rodriguez-Mora to talk about the middle school and overall additional supports. Oh, no, okay, sorry. We can do it together though. So we did an increase in need for tutoring. So as we, you can see from the slides, I historically went through the nineteen through due through twenty twenty two school year, you can see how many hours we have increased in tutoring. So we offered in the nineteen twenty and the twenty twenty one online because we were in very heavy COVID restrictions in the twenty one, twenty twenty two, we offered in person. This is actually tremendously helped our students. And I think we would have seen much more learning gaps if we didn't have this access. So these are students that possibly might have missed things from COVID or extenuating circumstances. And this was discussed in our, upon the PPS, what we call the meeting of the minds of our PPS staff meetings as well as if the teacher felt that that was necessary, we would just implement it because it was definitely necessary for our students. And then high school math foundational courses, we shifted. So there's a new geometry foundations course. We identify that the track for math and the trajectory, because not everybody knows this, it goes algebra, geometry, algebra two, and then the IB course, right? However, there are ways you can go if the child is feeling like they can't access that geometry. The traditional track was algebra. And if they couldn't do geometry, then they would do the personal finance, consumer math, production manufacturing route. And we needed that middle route, right? So we introduced this new geometry foundations course this week, this week, this year, and we found great success with it. And we found that now these kids will be able to access the geometry course the following year. In twenty eleven and twenty twelve, we was our last year of doing algebra trig and statistics. And this course, we reinstated as a buffer between that geometry and that algebra two course. And we felt that that's very helpful. And then also in algebra, we added a lab in algebra for the our current high school students that are taking algebra. And we and this lab was to identify and help support those gaps in the fundamental core that they might have not had access to because of their, I don't want to say interrupted education, but their education, that was this hybrid learning style that they might not have had that one-on-one teacher or those small group instruction points or collaboration with their peers to learn those proper skills. So we continue to reassess and evaluate our curriculum instruction and course offers offerings to best support all of our learners. And I really do feel that the staff collaborating and talking so they don't feel like alone, as Mr. Malone put up on his previous slides that Mr. Nichols talked about. It's been hard on everybody in the school building and it's been stressful for everybody, but but having those points and coming back as a community, as a faculty and staff has really helped us feel like they weren't alone and also supporting all of our children. And this, Rob, we've got, I guess, more is going to talk about our extra middle school additional supports.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the ACE course. That's what we call it here. It stands for academic curriculum enrichment, and that's a support that's built into the middle school. So students who have access to this course may either have this course built into their schedule where they need every day or it might be an every other day model for that student depending on their need. So we did this small group instruction and we had a lot of focus this year in increasing access to small targeted group instruction because we were finding that students were needing that support in that meeting of the minds space that we were talking about. And this small group instruction is very much led by collaborative teacher support. So it's typically staffed by a faculty member who has space in their schedule to run the course. And then that faculty member might even be their actual direct course teacher for one of their courses. But that teacher works with all of the teachers who the student interacts with throughout the day and also has a direct line as well to our guidance counselor, Mr. Napoli as well, who is very much involved in the referral process typically for these courses as well. And then Mr. Napoli, who works with the ACE teacher, all of the teachers that serve that student usually has that direct line to the family. And it keeps the administration informed as well. So it's a really nice wraparound service in terms of keeping students taken care of. It is also tailored to the individual student needs. So these courses, these groups tend to be very small. And it really focuses on what those students need in that space at that time. So it could be maybe they're reviewing some content, so perhaps they're doing something that they're generally doing in their ELA course and that teacher might pre-read with them before they go to the class, right? Maybe Miss Caulfield connects with that teacher and says it would be great if you could preview these chapters, maybe go over some questions so that that student, these students are more prepared to participate in the lesson. It could be that they're reviewing content. Ms. McCabe taught me this class this year, maybe she's going over some material for an upcoming science test in her class with those students. It's also a space to reinforce fundamental skills. Perhaps you have students who are wrestling with a seventh grade free algebra math problem, but they're actually working on some of those arithmetic skills within that problem that's kind of hidden there, so they have space to practice that. And then going back to supporting executive functioning as well, this, a lot of our students that fall into these courses also need a lot of support and understanding how to plan and prioritize their work, how to organize themselves, how to manage their time and really how to start to take control and agency over their learning, which is a big piece of the middle of the middle years. And what we find is that in this space as well, we start to see that it really builds confidence for our students. They like having that preview, they like having that review. Well, here students say, oh, that was a little confusing in science, I'll just go over it in in ACE class with my teacher. I'm sure that that will be a space for me to work on that. The other piece too that we start to see is that it starts to teach that self advocacy. When we start to see students take those skills from that course into their classes and into their subjects. And then we hear from other from their teachers giving us really positive feedback on what's working and how they're seeing children grow and change. And that lets us know that we're doing a good job in that space. If you look at our enrollment numbers, just to kind of point it out, you can see that we have increased quite a bit from nineteen twenty nineteen twenty twenty year, which was eighteen students to now twenty eight that we had currently supporting this year. So looking at our path forward with these services that we've talked about in the middle school and high school space, when a continued foundational high school math courses, they're working and we want to continue to have them for next year. We want to actually continue to build in the middle school ACE courses for the following year. So we already have students who were in these courses in seventh grade and found it to be very successful. We want to start them in these courses in eighth grade as well, so that the foundation is already there for them. We want to continue to reevaluate our individualized academic support plan, so going back to that meetings of the mind space and looking at our students. It'll be fantastic this summer to see how they close out the year and then we can start to be very proactive about our fall. And then the last piece is we want to continue to realign and restructure our curriculum across grades, but also across subject areas as well within their grades too. And that's really a big project that we're really excited about looking at for the next couple of years.
Sure.
Yeah. I know if you're done.
Yeah. With the ACE program, what grade does that start in?
So we started in sixth grade. So we, right now, it's mostly running sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Depending on how the schedule works, typically sixth graders stay together and then there might be some seventh, eighth grade crossover. But it's all depending on everyone's individualized schedule and when there's free teaching time.
So so what's kind of what's the event that triggers the having a student start to participate in this? Is it, you know, is it towards the end of fifth grade? Is there sometime some kind of discussion saying we think that these students could benefit from it? Or is it just kind of organic over the year?
It's organic and it's dependent on each kid. So we will get, we, every year, our fifth grade teachers meet with our sixth grade teachers and they discuss what what we have coming in and how we can support them. So sometimes, yes, it is planned out that a sixth grader coming in will have this support class. And then also it comes out in our grade team meeting. So when we meet with their sixth, seventh and eighth grade team, they identify students that are struggling and they seem to be struggling at the same fundamental skill that they all need. And then we try to put them all in an ACE class. It's been various, it might be just a teacher that has a class of very heterogeneous students and there was one that really seems like an outlier that needs an extra help and maybe a preview portion of it. And then we put them in an ACE class. So it's pretty organic and it's great that we have such, this is where it's great that's ever so small. We're able to implement as much as possible with the extra staffing.
Yeah, and then I would add to that, Amanda Napoli, our guidance counselor, has, you know, the ears on the ground because everyone talks to her, right? So she'll hear from a parent, maybe asking for this course, not realizing what they're asking for, but asking for these supports and identifying those supports. And she might talk to the student and see it in the student and then she might hear from a teacher and then she's the one that usually will put all the pieces together and contest and say, hey, I'm hearing this from all of these different sources and it sounds like this might be an appropriate support for this.
It's great that there's a structure in place to make it easier to provide these resources versus having layoffs.
And then I would also add Mary McLaughlin, who is our scheduling guru, when we come to her with a need, she is able to do so many maneuvers to find that space for the course for the student. So we're usually able to provide the support in a way that's thoughtful into their schedule.
I would just add that, like, I've heard from, you know, throughout the year from parents, I'm just, I appreciate how flexible and nimble you guys have been in all these different situations where a kid might, you know, be struggling in something and that's when you move them to a different academic support. But then if that doesn't work, you then try the ACE program, if the kid doesn't like the kids and the ACE thing, so then they go to a different academic support. Even late in the year, you guys were switching people out of pods into other ones for different reasons. And like, it just, you know, there's no reason for a kid to be stuck in one path at any point in the year and just the amount of attention to detail and flexibility you guys have shown has been awesome for so many kids.
Yes, a middle school student is hormonal, as we know, and they're a very different child from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, so it has to provide for them.
And there are moments too where they're in every other day ACE course, they might lean off to a once a week check-in too if they start to show that progress and that.
Any other question?
Board members?
I think it's great that we're tracking that and making a plan to catch up next year or watch those students go forward.
So the headline here is that despite twenty eight months of pandemic challenges, the IB program appears to sustain steady participation rate and performance levels consistent with this one, which was our goal these past twenty eight months. And it's an achievement of, in fact. Can you switch the slides, Scott? So what happened when we shut down in twenty twenty? IB classes have a project within it that contributes to their final grade one through seven. So that's a fundamental difference between IB and AP, that's what the students do in the course. And that work we call IA, short for internal assessment. The reason it's called an internal assessment is normally our students graded or our teachers graded to an IB standard and then IB takes a random sample to moderate that, to be sure that we're, I'll tell you that's since the start of the pandemic, IB has taken all the work. So rather than random sampling a few here or there, we've sent everything. Consistent with IB philosophy, when they cancel their exams, they believe that the students are best judged on work that they do where they have the opportunity to receive feedback and approve that work. So they base student scores in twenty twenty on the IA that we sent to them and the predictive grade. Our teachers give a predictive grade for each student relative to our track record with predictive grades. The algorithm that they used, they've kept secret. We were happy with the results, so we didn't contest the algorithm. It was a very different experience from the students who took AP courses that year because they took very abbreviated exams at home. And I think the IB did a better job in terms of making sure the students were ready on their work in a manner that was consistent with what the expectations were for the shutdown. In twenty twenty one, IB scaled back some of the requirements. So an IB exam usually consists of two or three papers. In some cases, they eliminated a paper strategically planning for what they thought would be lost or compromised instructional time, such as we experienced with our hybrid instructional model. We were able to give in-person exams in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. We had the option of not doing that. We felt students always better for them to have the opportunity to demonstrate what they've learned as long as we can safely conduct the exams. Thankfully, we were able to do that, which is great. This year, it's important, I got COVID the second week of exams. My colleague stepped up very much to make sure that the administration of the exams went off without a hitch. And we'll get those results back July sixth. So at some point, I can update you on how we've done this year. Scott, please. So these are some data points that we've historically reported to the board about the IB diploma. The number of students who have these one course, the total enrollment, the number of tests we administer in any given year. Students can be enrolled in a course and not be taking an exam. Most of our courses are two-year courses, so they're enrolled but won't be taking an exam in that course. The IB is graded one through seven. Four is considered passing, so we have the number of students scoring four or higher and the percent of students scoring four or higher. So you see in the first two years of the pandemic, the performance level was consistent. Then we have the number of students who challenge the diploma, our diploma candidates and the number who actually received diplomas. If you see previous to the pandemic in the eighteen nineteen years, extraordinary year, we started out with thirty five candidates, ended up with twenty eight. Only nineteen received the diploma. That was when it was confirmed for me that senioritis is indeed contagious. There was a group of about seven kids who got into college and just checked out, unfortunately. That was an anomaly. Most of our students stick it out and and do do quite well. Excellent, Scott, please. Back one, please, right? So these are IB pass rates in the different courses that we offer. You see that we do very, so for example, if you look all the way to twenty twenty one, at the top is the percent pass overall rate on all the exams. But all the way to the right, right underneath that, you'll see English HL in parentheses is twenty six, that's twenty six students took the exam and a hundred percent of C four or higher. And a higher level exam that usually translates to college credit and certainly translates to placement at a freshman comp in a traditional university. Some highlights, you see, we do quite well in sciences, do very well in history, do better in Spanish than French, but we're working on that. And as well in math and in the arts. Scott, please. So these are average scores. This, I think, is a better data point. These are all the students who took the exam, so if you go back to English all the way to the right, twenty twenty one, those a hundred percent passing students from the previous slide, those twenty six students averaged four point four. So though a hundred percent of them passed, they didn't necessarily perform at as high a level as we would like. And that was an exam. So twenty twenty is has the asterisk, that's the year that they were rated based on their IA and the predictive grade.
Stuart, Mike, what's the maximum score?
Seven.
The other thing to point out, Mike, is that in looking at the data, there's an open enrollment box.
Yes.
So there's no, there's no prerequisites to gain entry into any of these courses, which is not always the case in high schools. If you don't screen students who want to take it, we'll certainly give them some feedback in terms of whether we think it's an appropriate course selection, but ultimately it's okay.
And in fact, we encourage them to challenge challenging coursework. One thing we know in education is that students who have the experience of this coursework, even if they're not successful, their outcomes are better later on in terms of higher education and otherwise. We see it as our job to help them be successful.
So in terms of this data, just seeing what the averages are by by subject, I mean, it's helpful because you can say, okay, it's not an anomaly of a year the average student performance, if you have a big gap from one subject to another, right? Because generally speaking, you're going to, we're a small school. So how is this used in terms of planning going forward? Do you look at it and say, okay, we're seeing a trend in the subjects, we have to reevaluate how, what the instruction is or what's the reflection process?
Yeah, it's usually. Yeah, it's usually with the group of teachers or the teacher in that subject. We usually talk about performance, they want to know. So those conversations will start next week when they get their results back. And we talk through, you know, we're small enough that the advantage is when we have those conversations, we're talking about individual students and then also choices they're making with curriculum. And it will go into instructions as well sometimes when we discuss perhaps, you know, a more workshop format would be better, last lecture, maybe rooms and readings. And we're, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. Can you flip forward, Scott?
Can I ask one more question? Is there like, I don't know much about the percentile? So let's say, you know, a student that gets a five, what's the percent of across all the students like that that took this IB course? Not just subcover, but like across.
International.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have that.
Yep. So this is how, I think this is a helpful data point. These are our students who challenge the diploma. So they take seven courses, they do an extended essay, they take a philosophy course, they fulfill a community service requirement. This is how they're performing on the diploma relative to the worldwide average, which includes some very elite schools internationally. So it's a, it's a select group. The passing score is twenty four to earn the diploma, which is to average four over the six exams that they take, including averaging or earning twelve points in the higher level courses. We've had students, a number of them, especially in that twenty nineteen year where they get the twenty four points, but they didn't get twelve points in their higher level courses. The students take three higher level and three standard. So in that case, they don't get the diploma. These are the amount of points our students are earning. So you see in twenty sixteen, we started to exceed the international average. In that twenty nineteen year, we dipped below. But then you see since then, we're consistently tracking upward with the IB worldwide average. But we're giving in-person exams, whereas a significant percentage of the schools are not. They're still relying on that, generating grades from the IA score and the predictive grade. And as you see, IB is being generous with those. Whereas their, their worldwide average stayed consistently at thirty for a couple of decades. It's now up around thirty four. I anticipate this administration, it may stay there or slightly lower. But by the following year, I think we'll get back closer to thirty, all schools taking.
Do you know how we compare to other schools in the United States?
No.
I mean, I don't know if you even have access to it, it might be, yeah, they probably don't break it out like that, right? Because I know some, well, it's same in the United States, but so many schools in other countries, you have to qualify for your upper level, pre-university schools. And, and in some countries, only kind of the top tiered students even get to that, their high school version of what this would offer.
Yes, and thanks for bringing that up because I should have mentioned this earlier. The predicted grade in European and Asian countries is used for university admission. So teachers give predicted grades to the students, the students submit those to the university as offered admission. And sometimes the university will rescind that offer if they don't live up to what the promises of their predicted grades are. So the process of generating those predicted grades and IB's tracking of them is real serious, it's not thrown in the dark.
What, was there, I mean, just data wise in that eighteen nineteen year, what the recent pandemic was? Or so what happened was, the way it works is that you're in a higher level course. At the end of the two-year sequence, we sit for an exam. In addition to having to complete like your creativity action service and I'm not sure where that falls. But when the students got into college, Mike talked about senioritis, let's say they were admitted by March or April and they knew where they were going. The response on the part of like seven or eight of them was, well, I'm in. I'm admitted, I don't really need to finish this, it's not going to help me. So that was, that was in very black and white terms, that's what happened.
Yeah, based on our college admission process and based on the fact that we let anyone do it, you'd actually think we should always be below the worldwide average, given how. But the fact that we actually went above it is pretty impressive.
But that was, that was a very interesting year to have seven or eight kids. Sort of like, oh my God, what do you say to a student either? You can say to them, hey, you should be in this to finish it. And if you don't finish it, it's not going to set you up well for success moving forward. But that particular year, they didn't really want to hear it.
And the colleges they applied to didn't rescind the exception because they didn't complete the program as successfully as we had hoped. So you don't have that same kind of carrot and stick that you do in some other countries.
And typically, by the way, the commitment, if you're a diploma student, your, your senior year, especially your second semester or your senior year, is a mu- much different experience than a student who's bound to follow camp. Because sunshine comes from March to June.
You've got the capstone project due at the end of the year, you've got, it's, it's a big heavy lift.
And the analysis we do is on a very individual level. So that year, there were literally seven students who really checked out of Iowa. And they ended up underperforming on the exam. And even though they earned the twenty four points, they didn't get it because that's a higher level course and they didn't achieve the twelve points. It really was bad. Though, I should point out though, that that year, we had more students get the diploma. It was a really extraordinary year, it was wonderful students.
He said nineteen, got it.
Yeah, class of nineteen. But.
And nineteen students were sliding, yeah.
And originally, I remember discussing this program and launching it. There was some discussion about that there could be an expectation that a higher percentage of students might go through the diploma program. I, you know, and I could argue both sides of that because at the end of the day, there's a certain level of commitment that none of the students going to want to make. I think we have a lot of students who could accomplish it, but you have to have the commitment to do it. Have we kind of shifted to say we think the diploma program is right for many students, but it's really more important just to have as many students as possible take at least one or two of these classes?
My sense is that we should be shooting to get as many kids into the diploma as possible program. But your other comments are accurate. I mean, it's the equivalent, if in the old world of AP, it's the equivalent of taking four, four or five AP courses, new junior and senior year.
And by senior year, most kids don't do that. They didn't like it.
I would say at least ten, yeah, over two years.
So a lot of kids, like students don't, can't make that commitment.
I was going to say also, and I don't need to interrupt, but I believe that our students that have been learning in a pandemic, especially our current incoming eleventh graders, they are not comfortable with how confident they are as learners because of how they've been learning. And I think we're seeing that, not as many kids accessing before that probably could have accessed it in our current cohort coming in just because they've been learning on this hybrid online learning schedule where they're in, they have the immediate intelligence to do it and you have more kids accessing it, but because they don't have the confidence in their academics, they're not accessing the program.
The other data point, which is more qualitative in nature, is that when we, when we spoke to the IB diploma recipients about their college experience a couple of years ago, their feedback was that it was very, very helpful to them specifically as it related to their writing skills as well as their time management skills. Because if you're a diploma candidate, you've got to manage all these, these long-term expectations that you get when you enter the program in eleventh grade all the way through to the end, which is much more similar to what they're going to experience in college.
Do you have a sense of what, just in general, what percentage of our students in eleventh and twelfth grade take at least one IB course?
I can't say it's half or higher.
It's higher, it's actually about sixty, a little north of sixty percent.
Okay, that's great.
And they're mostly going to be AP?
No, so historically, pre-IB, your accelerated course offerings were advanced placement courses. And if you don't take advanced placement courses, you usually sit for the New York State courses, which are culminated in a reasons assessment. So now, what we basically did is we replaced AP with IB with the exception of a few AP courses that made sense to hang on to. We still have a few of those. But if you don't opt for taking an IB course, generally, you're taking a New York State course that culminates in a regions or an elective offering that doesn't even have a region attached.
I realize I'm presenting this without the context, maybe too, that if the board would like our IB primer, I'm happy to do that. So that'd be helpful. Future meeting, I'm sure. So I'm hopeful here, I think my headline here is that we're improving relative to the worldwide average because we were taking tests as personal. And I think this has inflated the past two years because some tests were not taken personally and IB is being generous.
And next year, we have indication. And it's going to go back to, why we own person, I would think, unless.
Unless be a four and five.
Yes. It's fairly restrictions in Europe and Asia that necessitate IB having the two pathways, maintaining the two pathways.
And by country by country, it's different what you're doing, you know, time, month by month.
Yeah. So here's one more, please, Scott. So this is worth knowing, I'll touch on this in the primer, but math has changed since the last time I spoke to the board about IB. It used to be that we had two in-house options, which were math SL and math studies SL. That slide's wrong, apologize. Math was a continuation from algebra two that led to, historically, we had that for one year as a junior and then AP calculus to students. Math studies was a much less rigorous math option for students who weren't math inclined, who wanted to challenge the diploma. It was basically, it wasn't rigorous mathematically at all. It was just the two most basic statistics functions, a multiple regression and a chi square applied to different real life things. It was a really interesting course. IB got a lot of feedback from universities that what they wanted was to make sure that students who weren't going into math dependent fields such as engineering or studying math itself, they wanted them to have a really strong foundation in algebra two for the type of quantitative reasoning courses that they would encounter in other disciplines. So they made the easy option a lot harder. So the two courses we have now are analysis and approaches and applications and interpretation. They're both two-year courses, so students take them junior and senior year. We are, had our first group finish this new math just this year. So we'll have our first data on how we've done next week. The applications, all of, both of these courses touch on all of the core mathematics topics. That's how IB structures math, so it's something in a group product, right? There's more calculus in analysis, it's more pure math, but within the applied track too. And in that course, they do do about twenty percent calculus as well. So they're both very rigorous, it's just that the applications course focuses more on statistics and application functions and analysis sticks more with pure math.
So if you were, if you were going to study engineering, which course would you take?
Analysis. And that's what IB wants. And the applications course really strengthens the foundation in algebra two, which is what universities are interested, students coming in with a really strong algebra two foundation. So next, Scott. So pathway forward is to build a collegial focus on program development equality. We've been really focused on sustaining where we're at the past couple of years. Now I think it's time to dig in as an IB faculty and figure out how we can improve together. And an emphasis on improving equality to IH, which is something that we were prepared to do right before the shutdown in 2020, that level threes are a level three IB workshop. So level one and two, level one's introductory, level two is to dig into the nuts and bolts of the course. Level three is for highly experienced IB faculty to focus on an aspect of it. And we are going to have teachers participate in level three workshops that are focused on the IA, on that project. It's my belief that digging into that project, really, there's a spillover effect into their other instruction. When they really dig into trying to figure out how to have a student improve on the quality of their project, they're really thinking more deeply as well as more globally about the course in general. And I think we'll see improvement come out of that deep dive into the project. We also want to reinvigorate the external network. So there are roundtables held in the tri-state area where teachers go and hang out with other teachers who teach that same course and they share tips and build a network that's very valuable. That has been weakened considerably in the past couple of years. And I know that teachers who are really invested get a lot out of those relationships and that networking. So we want to make sure we build those back up strongly and make sure participation is high. And also continue to focus on the new maths, this is a really important component and make sure that we're getting that right. We'll have our first data next week. That's all. Questions for Mr. Ben?
Just have one more question. After we implemented this, we did a, you guys did a deep dive evaluation on whether we should implement the middle years. And the recommendation was against it because there were some components that we didn't feel reflected what we wanted here. But there was still the commitment of from, from, you know, elementary school up, we're going to spiral up and kind of shift some of our instruction, our focus so that they were better prepared to, to enter this program. Do we still feel like we have to do any more of those adjustments?
Brittany, you want to?
So I think we have been making those adjustments, that's what we're talking about, hands on the ground curriculum work. I think it was a snap through with the pandemic a little bit because instruction shifted a bit. But I do have to say our IB teachers, teachers are collaborating with our other integrations as well as their departments to give examples and provide examples of assessments that they're giving and then other teachers are learning from them. We've had a lot of intervisitation going on, where teachers visit other classrooms to see what type of teaching style they're doing, what they're facilitating in their classrooms that they can use it in their own classroom. So I think that's happening still. There was a little bit of a hiccup with those two years of pandemic, but we're getting out to it and it's definitely one of our.
We still feel like the middle years program isn't what we want, that this is a better way to address it.
Middle years, from my perspective, middle year program doesn't have the assessment piece that's as rigorous as the diploma program. So if you implement it, it's not going to mirror the diploma program.
This is also where plant comes into play earlier on, right? And then you guys, I know, are planning on doing a bunch of work on the curriculum for plant this summer, so.
Absolutely.
Look forward to hearing about what that's going to be.
And then if I could just, I'll echo too, we have the beauty of being a six to five spaces. We have a lot of IB teachers who teach sixth grade, who teach seventh and eighth grade. And they are mirroring the format of the curriculum in the IB space down to the middle school space as well. And that has been like a really great way for students to have those requisite skills for those courses.
Thanks for mentioning that, probably.
And they've actually been partnering, I should say, just a little shout out to our great teacher, Ms. White Dunn, and Ms. Kucherovski did a project, a culminating project with Ms. White Dunn's IB course, the free course together this year.
You mentioned you guys are looking at the plant course. I think we need to do more for, I don't think I've spoken about this organization. It's even more so in today's world, these kids have so many things going on. Is there any thought about giving, I know some other school districts give every kid a planner and say, this is how you use it. And they say you have a schedule, is that something that might be part of the plant?
Yeah, our summer list of to-dos, it's trying to figure out how to organize our middle school as well as our high school students because I think they still need practice, even though usually at the time of high school, they're self-advocating, they're able to organize themselves. It's calendaring and organization is a big key and we're working on that. And each kid has to take the plant curriculum, so we want embedded in that. But also within the grade, you have the same setup so that when you go to each class, they have the same way of giving out homework or putting it in the same place so that each kid knows how to operate. And so, so the parent, when they go home, knows what everything is instead of them saying, oh, there's no homework. And like, actually, no, we don't want this.
Sorry, I just, I don't understand. So the planning in this organization is going to be part of the plant curriculum?
I think, I think what we are right now committing to is we have an idea of how to help all the students organize. Let's say their assignments start there with like an assignment calendar, now we have an idea. Plant would be a space to anchor that check-in to make sure that it's working. But I think like what Brittany is saying, it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck kind of approach with all of the teachers in the building because our students have not had that structure in place for a while or maybe not at all, if they were sixth graders this year as well. So we're looking, we're trying to look at a universal system that'll work for all, for the student's perspective, the teacher's perspective, the parent who has.
So we're looking, we're trying to look at a universal system that'll work for all, for the student's perspective, the teacher's perspective, the parent who has three kids in three different grades. Like it should be a similar structure that everyone can access.
And each teacher within each grade is using the same verbiage so that it's not confusing. Cause that also, they might be saying the same thing, but differently and that confuses the child.
I think that's all sounds great, cause I know Alex and I have had these conversations where it's like, we hear planners aren't cool. And um, that like, even though everyone uses Google Classroom, one teacher actually uses it properly. Another one, oh, that duty doesn't act, it's not a real duty. And so just it, it's hard for people to like, that are parents that want to actually help their kids figure it out. You know, there's different relationships that are going on there. Um, but you know, it's hard, it's just hard to stand off them.
And we as administration are looking at how to make that easier for parents because the problem with Google Classroom is the parent can't log, has to log in as their kid to look at it properly because as a guardian, you don't see the same thing. Um, that is one default in Google Classroom, so it's how do you, and also why do parents have to have five different assignments of Google Classroom, then eSchool, then MySchoolbox? So we're trying to just narrow that down and hold the teacher accountable by just looking on the eSchool and then a calendar, because a calendar is much easier and visually stimulating for everybody instead of just having to log into that Google Classroom and trying to get that account from their kids.
So I just, sorry, I don't, I didn't understand completely the answer, but I personally think that our kids need more, need to be shown, this is a calendar and this is how you use that. So if that's something that could be part of the plant program, I think that'd be great, or otherwise, I think it would be very helpful.
I think what Bronco was saying, and I was saying, it's gonna be plant as the place holder and the anchor, but it has to be done in all the classes and it has to be the same verbiage. So that's what we're gonna work on with our grading. So that everybody's on the same page and then we can email from grade sixteen and the grade seventeen, this is how we're working and this is how we're organizing, we're all on the same page. And then also hold everybody accountable on that grading and the kids, the parents as well as our teachers. It's gonna be a hefty task.
Is that part of the executive functioning that I saw in the presentation?
Yeah, it's a, it's a small part, it's also kind of also figuring out what's appropriate at sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, right? Because you wanna build that opportunity for them to become self-advocate, to start monitoring themselves, to start adding it slowly. But most likely our September build-out is going to be very hand-holding from the adults until we can start to get them on a groove and then we can start to let go a little bit when it's more age for a period.
I'm accepting, I know where you're going, cause I had that issue with my son last year, that he was not really up to that executive functioning. So he wanted, the whole point is like how to get them more independent, so they can go in and do their own homework, follow the skill, doing anything else. So that's, I think, the skill we're trying to develop.
And then it's also acknowledging to you that it's going to be for every student as well, right? Cause everyone is going to adapt to that.
By the way, this has been going on forever. My kids were in middle school, I mean Jeff's, my kids have gone through the family, you know. It's, you have kids at very different uh, degrees of uh, ability, willingness, readiness, you know. And, and planners were never cool. So I just had to remind my kids, it's less cool to miss assignments, I'd have to come help us with that.
But basically it sounds like, I mean, we've had these discussions. Uh, we actually had a meeting about it about a month ago with a certain parent I sat in on. But it sounds like we're going to standardize the process to the extent that it's consistent not only in the middle school, but into high school as well. Anticipating that students number one are gonna need help in, in organizing themselves, but number two, also anticipating that students are not averse to sort of gaming the system a little bit and misleading their parents if they're not doing their job. So if there's one consistent, consistent way that the teachers six through twelve are addressing their organizational skills and we're consistent with that, it leaves less opportunity for students to find these little ways to navigate around. That makes sense. All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thanks to Chris Sizer, the one board member who brought IB to the discussion.
Or consent agenda item.
Right, I had a comment I wanted to make about seven point four eight, do I need to first ask to have that pulled out?
Yes, um.
The Nash Park contract for next year.
Yeah, let's do this, I wanna make a, um, we're gonna withdraw consent agenda item seven point three two, seven point three zero. So it's gonna be removed at this time. And then going to next, remove seven point four eight from the consent agenda item. Want to move it to the action items?
Sure.
With action items after uh, the consent agenda.
Brittany, sorry, you said seven point three two, what was the other one?
Seven point three two and seven point three zero.
We got an email about three year. Yes, I just didn't know about three two.
Yeah, probably drawn from the consent agenda item. And then seven point four eight, move to after the consent agenda item was actioned. Then with that, I'm gonna have a motion, is there a motion for consent agenda items seven point two through seven point two nine, seven point three one and seven point three three through seven point four seven.
So moved.
A discussion.
I just, I just want to thank the region interest for donating over ten thousand dollars. There are programs which are no cost to, to, to continue to help that program flourish, so thank you very much.
With that, Mary, you open the voting.
Um, I'm, yes, Mary, I'm having trouble accessing the internet. Okay.
Me too. Yeah, so keep going. Yes, go.
Okay. That's Gina.
Great. Now moving on to item seven point four eight, what do we have as an action item discussion at this point?
Thanks, so this is the, to approve the agreement with Nash Park for the next year for two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So I'm gonna vote to approve it, but I just wanted to say, I, I, I think it'd be remiss to not say that I think that this is a bad deal for the school district. It's an arrangement that's been in place. I think a lot of people don't realize this is not a lease agreement. The, in the park charter that our kids can play at the park. And what we're real, what this really is, is a priority use agreement, meaning if we have a baseball game, you don't have to make sure we run over there and sign up ahead of softball or something else, but in my view, there's not a lot of other folks using it or getting in front of us um, during the school year and it's not a very good deal. And, and I say that not to criticize the park board, on the contrary, I think they've worked really hard with us over the past year or more to put, and it worked in good faith, to put together a longer term arrangement that would be better for the school district and better for the park and better for the community. Um, and I think for that reason, we as a school district in good faith should continue this agreement for the next year while we continue to work on that. But I think it's, it's important, especially as we, as we consider and as the community is gonna consider what the new proposed arrangement is. Um, I think the, the starting point is that what's here now is not, is not a good, it's not a good arrangement from the school district's perspective. So I just want to say that and say that I, I'm in favor of supporting.
Anybody else?
Um, I would, I would echo many of Alex's comments and it's no reflection of the park board and they're a volunteer organization and the partnership's really important. We've, we've attempted in the past, and it's a public document, we've attempted in the past to attach to these agreements some provision of expectation of short-term improvement or maintenance or accountability. This is a one-year gap with the assumption, the hope that the bond will pass and then there'll be a long-term uh, agreement that will be structured differently than what this agreement is. So this is a stopgap to get us to that place. If the bond was not gonna be in place, then my recommendation would have the, to have a very different approach to this. One that has kind of more teeth in it as a, as a two parties in a relationship. So I do think that, I, I view this as kind of a stopgap to get there. And I would not hope that this would be the typical type of relationship we have through the contractual agreement long-term.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just saying, I agree.
I agree as well.
With that, is there a motion to approve item seven point four eight? Is there a second? Any additional discussion?
So I was not prepared to do.
Much more vote manually.
So manually.
I'll go around, yes.
Yes.
I vote I.
I.
Chris? For now?
Yeah.
Alex?
Hi.
Ryan?
I.
Motion approved.
Thank you. On to item section eight of tonight's agenda, which is many reports, if there is no leave. Anyone on that committee can give an update, not been carried over some, that, and eight point one, which is the diversity and inclusion committee.
Okay. So uh, we last met June fifteenth and moving our head, our intention is to meet this summer, to set goals in order to launch initiatives beginning this fall. We look forward to building a professional development and learning series for teachers and then a separate one for parents and focused on anti-racism. We are extending our collaborative work with John Germain Library to focus on generating diverse, independent reading lists and increasing access to audio and digital tasks. And then we're also looking forward to continuing to create an open-minded space for our middle school and high school student committee, subcommittee to contribute to the work of the district and the areas of diversity. So those are our goals for the summer and and we hope to start launching some of these initiatives.
Item eight point two on tonight's agenda, the policy committee.
Well, beginning, I just wanna acknowledge, so that's more specifically supporting the policy committee, started with you on, and then continued through your guess. And you stayed on extra with a special commission for some of our policies to stay on, because we were working with that and we're still um, almost done. It's a big undertaking and I want to appreciate, I just wanted to. Um, so just very quickly, uh, we have several policies um, out there still. And the committee is committed to moving forward over the summer through email to try and get them to the board. We had to, um, just recently meet to the board for a second approval. Second meeting approval, which was called, we have received feedback just before our unit meeting, we just couldn't complete the response. So we'll complete that response. Part of the challenge is approving new policies while maintaining the old manual and building the new manuals. So every time we approve a policy, we have to double-check numbers. And the numbers in the old manual, because it's, it's definitely needed to be revised, they don't line up with the new Ms. Ba and the everyone goes these manuals. So it gets, it can be pretty complicated. So we're committed to doing that and that's the staff, it's a police policy and the students. We had a great second discussion at our last June ninth meeting, um, when we completed the, the student gender identity, we weren't expecting to get that done, but we got done. Um, so that's just, we wanted our attorney to quick look at that and then we'll bring it to the board for a third meeting. We'll continue to press forward on that. And then we have one more policy that we're, you know, on the slide that. And I just want to acknowledge the committee members, there were several again, that have been spending several years to work on the policy manual. And then it's my knowledge, some members, we have Superintendent Nichols, Jeff Nichols, your votes, various board member, Mike Guiney, Assistant Principal. We also have Susan McCarthy, teacher, Virginia Arrington, community member, Christina Fossis, Chris, I'm sorry, Chilken, Stofferson, community member, parent and Brandon Holstein.
Good, thank you very much. Next, item from discussion this evening. To section ten of tonight's agenda, which is public input number two, the same rules apply that I read earlier. There is anyone here for public answer number two, you can come up to the lectern or raise your hand or put that question into the chat room if you're following our meeting online. Mr. Fisher?
I don't see anybody with a hand raised. There was a, a question that came in after we finished the park presentation.
You can read it, that would be great.
Yes. It says, uh, sorry, I tried to raise my hand. Here was my question on the park, would it be possible to have a version of this plan and budget without the tech? I guess that's supposed to be track and field, hockey field. I was under the impression that field hockey needs a turf field, so if that isn't an option, why would we spend so much to build a grass field that won't fulfill the purpose? And that was um, submitted by Jeff Ziegler.
Mr. Nichols, if you can.
Yeah, so the, so the, the committees discussed the possibility of uh, putting turf specifically uh, within the track and the park board expressed, expressed a preference not to do that and in keeping with the aesthetic that currently exists, they prefer natural grass. I, I don't want to interpret what Mr. Ziegler's uh, statement implies, but he seems to suggest that you can't play field hockey on natural grass. You can, um, he is accurate in that the majority of high schools play on artificial turf.
Right, thank you. Okay, with that, I'm gonna in a moment ask if there's a motion to go into executive session, then motion does carry, then this will be the end of the public hearing for anyone watching or hearing in person. The board, if we go into executive session, will come out of executive session, the sole purpose of just closing the public meeting. So with that, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss contracts?
So moved.
Is there a second, any discussion? Can you hear no one, Mary, will it open the voting, please?
Thanks, Brad, for doing a great job. Okay. Hi.
Hi.
That's Gina.
Great, so the motion carries, that'll be the end of public meeting, so that'll allow everyone a chance to leave or in the camera and before we go into executive session, so have a good evening, everybody.